What's good y'all, it's your boy Dre at Samurai Kinnels and I'm here with my brothers Soul and Big A. The rest of the panel might be coming through a little bit later on and tonight we're gonna do a hot wash. This is a town hall meeting for those y'all who are listening now or futuristically. The town halls are gonna be something we use to get direct feedback from our parishioners. And a way that we use to directly improve and take a democratic approach to improve our channel. But before we get into any of that, we gotta pay them sponsors with the intro. Yes sir, yes sir, my brother Soul 601BA, y'all run hot like the people.
Hey, it's your boy Big A back in the building like I left my wallet and keys, man, you know what it is. What's up everybody?
What's good big bro? Man, blessed to see you bro, blessed to see you.
Yes sir, it's your boy Soul Power, Mr. AK Gamed Up Kinnels up in the building. Some of the bringing up some of that old school Stone Cold Energy, what?
Yeah, before we get into this thing too, B man, let me give a big shout out to Big Hill fam. They are our 11th member y'all, we moving on up in the world. Let's go big bro.
Tip, 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 hey, can I hit it, can I hit it Dre?
Yes sir, yes sir, go ahead and hit it thanks.
Bring that money in.
Hey y'all, so I do wanna go ahead and do a quick roll call as well for everybody in the building, everybody who will be coming in later. Y'all catch, y'all catch this on the replay. Shout out to Big Hill fam, Tony M, Samurai Kinnels, who's dog. Coda is also our Chogun's choice dog. We are sponsoring Coda for the next Digital Dog Show, y'all come out with them Blade Sharp trying to beat Coda. Sis Williams, Ms. Williams, what's good sis? Alright, alright, Ms. Williams, the wife type in the building as well. Fam is getting on in here y'all, Po Boys Trucking LSP, big salute to you bro. But yeah y'all, we got some topics to cover man. I'm not gonna get too far into it, I'm gonna give everybody a chance to see the notification come through for the live. But I gotta cover tonight man, in there in the description, let me get that description pulled up, get my life together over here. And if not, I got him, I got him in my memory. Description will come up, it's not, it's crazy, it's great, great. Anyways y'all, I'm just gonna go off the top because I know exactly what I wanted to discuss. So, some of the things that I wanted to discuss tonight are.
I got one in their veins, but you gotta unlock the door, get the key.
Some of the things I wanna discuss tonight are, one, the Digital Dog Show, the pros and cons of the Digital Dog Show, right? Wanna talk about things we can improve and make it better because the next Digital Dog Show will be a charged digital dog show. Then I also want to discuss the updates and the submissions and how things are carried out. Because some brothers were saying they like the vote and other brothers said they wanna judge. So I'm gonna put it to the community to kinda get, to kinda take a pulse of the street, to see what the streets want, or how they're gonna be judged, you know? Because at the end of the day, it's about serving the people and the people who participate are the ones who get the information and getting what they need to be successful in the show. You know, so I just wanna make sure that is 100% clear for everybody. For those y'all who are not tracking, our membership link is in the description below and I actually have found my notes to read it to y'all for exactly how I wanted to orchestrate the show tonight. So the Digital Dog Show, the things we identified previously, checking for a correct bite on the dog in the videos. Using only WhatsApp to submit videos because there was some issues with the videos, we're not using WhatsApp. Then we're gonna take votes over the next week, over whether I wanna continue to do the polling votes or whether I wanna be judged. I'm also gonna be taking votes over the next week for whether we want trophies or money for the winners. And then we're gonna go with things to improve. Then I got some topics me and my brothers gonna cook on and finally, I'm gonna open up for open discussion for members to come on here and speak their piece. For parishioners that subscribe to where they speak their piece, for any of the winners that are in the chat that come through and speak their piece, talk about their dogs, whatever. And we're trying to keep this thing around an hour and a half length because I know we all got things to do this week, it's the middle of the week. So we're just trying to get out here and get involved in these streets. But first, I wanna bring this topic up to my brothers, we gonna cook and discuss and y'all also discuss in the chat. And the things I wanna talk about with my brothers are, what we, what things we initially identified that we need to change, alright? And so my brothers, the things we brought up was, Jolo brought this up, checking for a correct bite on the dog, alright? And then another member asked, are we gonna require timestamps? Are we gonna require timestamps to ensure that it is a current video or photo of the dog, alright? Submitting through other than WhatsApp for the compression. That's the three things my brothers, I'm gonna tell cook on that, so instead of checking for correct bite, timestamps and or. Making sure you use only the WhatsApp, see y'all brother, what do y'all think Rose?
I think, me personally, I think that we should have a People's Choice actual dog show. And then we should have a little more structured, traditional dog show in a digital sense. But having well reputable judges take part in. You know, like maybe the People's Choices, I don't know, I don't know, it's just something to think on.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, I'm a little impartial to the bite thing because I'm of the ilk of, if the dog can perform said activities with his mouth. Then I give a damn if we got an under, over, or scissors bite. You know, if it can get onto that bite sleeve, if it get onto that spring pole, whatever it is, you know, that's what I'm more locked in toward. The timestamp, I definitely agree with, you know, I think moving forward, kinda like how you seen some of them video girls back in the day, the World Star, you know what I'm saying? Where they have their name on the sheet of paper, you know, they're gone with their little, their ads and so on and so forth, you know what I'm saying? When we moving forward, guys that had that, that date, you know what I'm saying, and that timestamp when they doing it, you know? I think that's gonna be the best way moving forward because cats could even be taking clips of other people's dogs, you know what I mean? So, I'mma rock out with that, timestamp it.
Alright, alright, 601 you had anything to put on that?
No sir, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just listening man, I'm just going with the flow man, y'all sounding good man.
Hey, let me go ahead and add, Big A, I'm with you too as far as like the People's Choice versus, you know, like going with the traditional manner where, you know? Confirmation to a T does, you know what I'm saying, does play part, you know, the scissors bite, so on and so forth. But I just like a good working dog, you know, I like a dog that look good and I like a dog to be able to exude, you know, the physical nature of the APBT.
Yeah, yeah. Yes sir, alright, so with that one being said man, like that's one of those things, anybody listening to this now on a replay. Y'all put in the comments which y'all think, which y'all want, because if you, if you don't speak up, you'll never be heard, alright? Brother Vinny, welcome to the chat, brother Melvin Brown, welcome to the chat, salute to everybody that just joined.
Can I get a brother's wellness salute, great brother?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Salute to the brothers and the sisters in the chat.
Alright, and something real quick about the WhatsApp, the reason why I encourage everybody to use the WhatsApp is, the WhatsApp allows the video to not be compressed. When it is released, when I repost it, if you send it through any other means, text messages, Facebook or Instagram, they're designed to compress it so they can be sent quickly, alright? Also shout out to W Raw Life Vision and Sounds, shout out to you my brother, welcome to the chat. And obviously, we kinda already discussed the voting judges versus polling, the other thing I wanted to try to bring up is, y'all still want us to do money? Or do y'all want us to do trophies and ribbons for the winners of the Digital Dog Show, you know what I'm saying? Y'all let us know, personally, if I was competing, I would prefer the money, you know what I'm saying? That's a personal preference of mine, but like, it's, when you're competing for something, if you can kinda have a say in the bit and up the ante, then that's on y'all, but my brothers y'all gonna cook on that as well.
I think if we, if we, you know, if we did do something like a People's Choice, a more traditional type of show. I think the traditional show should involve ribbons and trophies and then the People's Choice involves actual cash. Cause on the business side, from the, from the, from the inside looking out, a traditional dog show is going to cost more for the, on the, on the upfront. Than it will for the participants payout, so to enter into a traditional dog show, you would, we would have to pay the judges. You know, we were, you know, it's a lot of funding that would go into that, so that would justify trophies and ribbons versus having the People's Choice. Where the people or the judges and the overhead isn't so much, therefore the reward for the, for the participants are higher.
Completely agree, completely agree, hey Stevie Wonder had one of the greatest songs, I believe it's called Ribbons in the Sky. You dig, ribbons bro, and it's also a nice, you know, a trail for us to protect ourselves, letting it be known that, you know, this is a community over here of being productive. So, protective mechanisms, so I'm going with Ribbons in the Sky for 300 Samurai. Ribbon in the sky.
Alright, 601 what you, what you think?
You know, it's just like bro was saying man, I think, you know, well, you know, he was saying ribbons, but you know shit, I would think it's something like some certified certificates, you know what I'm saying? Stamp, boom, you know, and for the same purpose that brother just said, you know, to protect ourselves and then to let it be known that this is where this come from, this where it started from. Boom, you just went out of the second one, you know, they have paperwork to show, you know what I'm saying, what's really going on too. So, that is the same thing as the ribbons too, you know what I'm saying, cause all that coming to play, you know, just for protective mechanism and then just to do something for people to see or put on their wall, you know? Stamp certified, you know what I'm saying, from Samurai, you feel, the Digital Dog Show. All good.
Yeah man, that's, and the good brother Supreme said the same thing, he goes ribbons, so yeah, ribbons and trophy, that's a traditional thing man, and that's, that's cool, that's cool man. I just wanna make sure that the prizes are prestigious.
Right, you know, you know, that is important, bro, I ain't trying to cut y'all, but we just, you know, we still get a cash prize away too, but we can get a paperwork along with it. You know what I'm saying, or the ribbon and the paperwork and the trophy along with it, you know what I'm saying, because they gonna deserve all it, you know? Yeah, bro.
Understood, understood.
Hey Dre, what you over there drinking with that pinky in the air?
Hey man, I'm scared to tell you bro, they caught the pinky in the air.
Man, got that pink in there, that boy got that goddamn prestige straight, goddamn right, what are you drinking Dre?
This is a Sex on the Beach man, this is a Svenna vodka, triple shot of Svenna vodka, orange juice. Damn with that wine.
That boy's got that freak nasty drink, goddamn right, what? Trying to get loose like a goof.
Hey Supreme had a good idea too man, he said damn near make a belt and if you lose, you gotta hand it over, yeah man, I can see that.
That could be thrown in the mix irregardless. Yeah, when I used to play Madden, we used to do that.
Hey, that goddamn Pastor Troy belt.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be cool, cause here they built something to be over in New York, this round, the next round, that motherfucker something to be over there, you know?
Here's the problem though, everybody ain't gonna wanna give up that dang on belt. Brother get that belt, be holding on, hold on. He ain't letting it go, he ain't letting it go. I sent it off, I sent it off two weeks ago.
And they, and the belt ended up in India.
Man, I'm telling you.
Man, listen bro, they gotta play by the rule now, India gotta send that motherfucker on back. Yeah, man, we gonna keep it right now.
I wanna give a shout out to Party Boy Woods, another illustrious member in the chat, welcome to the chat bro, thank you, thank you rocking with, we appreciate you.
Well, the party boy.
Yeah man, my sister and no more playing GA, PT we ready.
Man, come on, come on now, come on.
Okay, alright, so that's, that's it for the things I wanted to put out there, obviously man, if y'all getting here later, y'all seeing this on the replay. Put your comments in the comment box, let us know what you thinking, because based on what my brothers are saying and our members, our subscribers and our constants. Y'all, y'all are on the same wave, you know? This show was just, was a, was just a fun thing, but it's growing, you know what I'm saying? Just to give y'all some of the numbers, Best Male Best Female combined for a total of 3,300 views. With all the videos combined together last week, we had over 22,000 views to our, to our, our channel, you know? Those dogs were exposed, those dogs were exposed to a lot of different things man, and between the shorts, promotional videos, the actual releases of the winners, the live. That's, we're recent audiences we wouldn't normally reach like Bangladesh, South Africa, like I said, India really rock with us hard man, so I appreciate everybody.
How many views did you say Dre?
22,000 last week.
Let that marinate. 22,000 views.
Yeah, imagine not being a box man, and all, having nothing to do with it, but yet, people know your dog, your dog has a name. When people say, when people hear that your dog's name, it ring a bell, oh I know that dog, you know, I saw that on Samurai, you know, and they go, you know, and you know how it goes, you know, you go years down the line. Yeah, I remember that dog from back then and that's what happened to that dog. I got that off of that dog man, and these dogs haven't gone through the procedure of the old ways to get that name. It's, it's a great avenue for promoting the breed and your dogs.
Absolutely, wellness salute to the brother Dre for, you know what I'm saying, putting together this gumbo.
I gotta thank, I gotta thank y'all, man, my team, the chat, my family, man, my wife, specifically my wife, man, we had our anniversary last week, her birthday is weekend y'all. My wife's birthday on the 22nd, you know what I'm saying, my eldest brother was also killed three years ago, this week, you know, for commemorating his passing, you know? Gone but I forgot, bro, shouts out to Super Dave.
Already, 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 happy birthday Sister Samurai.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Yeah, 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 in a real way, wellness salute.
It also, it also would've been, Super Dave's birthday would've been this weekend as well man, you know, he died right, right after his birthday, yeah. Yeah man.
Happy birthday Super Dave, happy solar day, happy solar day, your legacy will be carried on, great brother.
For sure, I also wanna shout out Stupid For Life Dog Training, man, we appreciate you Stupid For Life man, every time you come in here, through the energy and the vibe, it's good.
Yes sir.
And I wanna, I wanna read this comment from Brother Supreme y'all, because this, this is what I was talking about man, like this is what I'm talking about, he said, hell yeah. I got MFers asking me when I'm breeding fade, I'm like, y'all can't have none good exposure, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
That's the same thing brother Joe was saying, yup.
And you know, like I say, when you not a box man and you start to build that kind of name where, you know, your dog name rings bells, man, that's, that's, you know? That's big man, like money can't buy that, you know what I'm saying, you know, so that's something that, that comes with time and work. And it's just, just having a platform where we can bring it all together and everybody can get that exposure. Like I said man, I think the dog show is just the smallest part of the bit, because you still have the rest of the years. And people will be asking you about your dog, people, you know, people will be coming out the woodwork, you know, hopefully it takes you to the next level.
Yeah, and what's cool about it is, no matter how much beef some of our counterparts in this, in this YouTube, this creator thing that got going on, they all rock with us. And I don't care if you go to, I'm gonna use polar ends of the spectrum, PBK and the Twins, 78 and Fat Bill, all the channels, they all, they all shouted out. So it's being heard, not on, not just on this platform, but it's, they're directing the traffic over here, you know, and like these guys are, even the box men are hearing about it, even though I don't claim to be a box fan by no means, you know? But like they said, I'm happy that we're able to get that kind of exposure just from good people, you know what I'm saying? Also, Big Hill man, BV is that you? Cause if it is, I just talked to him before, he called me and checked in with me right for the show, shout out to Big Hill bro, real talk, asylum, very silent. Alright y'all, so things to improve, I'm asking, that over the next 30 days, if you got anything that you think would improve the Digital Dog Show, or make it better for viewing quality. Share it with us so we can incorporate it, because we're gonna start the rewrite of the rules and regulations in December, alright? The next three months are gonna be super busy for me because I'm doing year, you're in inventories for the jets. I manage 94, 94 30mm cannon gun systems for the A10 Warthog. Yeah, that's, that's the jet, it looks like a shark on the front, and so I gotta do some inventories for that, we rewriting a bunch of stuff, we're writing our show schedule for next year. We got a lot going on, but it's easier for me to write it in now to the rules than this for April to come around and you trying to make changes in April. That's like brothers were making suggestions for October, you know what I'm saying, those suggestions have to be made the quarter before. And I'm gonna break all that down going into the new year, because we're gonna, we call ourselves the Chogun Army, I'm a military training instructor by trade. I know all about organizational structure and I'm gonna teach the Chogun Army, whether you just a follower, we talk about different tiers, you can be a Chogun, you can be a Chogun or Demio, a Samurai. Merchant, you know, or even a, or even a peasant, but if you fall anywhere into Chogun Army, I need y'all to understand organizational structure, it's gonna make you stronger, it's gonna make you more efficient. Most of all, it's gonna make you more productive, we looking to create better people here, better people through, better, better dogs to create better people. Alright, my brothers, I know I got diarrhea in my mouth, if y'all got anything y'all wanna kick in before I get to the next topic, y'all more than welcome to kick in.
Everything, everything, I just wanna say appreciate this, to everybody man, and shout out to Ram and Schoolboy man, Mr. J Bo, and shout out to PBK, you know?
And I'm glad you said J Bo, J Bo my bad, J Bo, J Bo my bad man, I know you come through, I've been on, I've been on your chats man, you know, kicking it with J Bo, kicking it with Bo. Shouts out to him, if y'all not following J Bo, please go there and support him, he's a real.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, I be goddammit listening to them boys, hitting that like button ASAP off the muster for it, even store, you know?
Amen to that, so I was also telling the brothers that, one of the things. Oh, Party Boy said, let's go, let's get to these topics, alright? So, the first thing I wanna discuss, I'm gonna put the link in the chat too y'all, let me go and put this link in the chat, the first thing I wanna discuss with y'all is. Going to be transporters, alright? I'm looking for in fiscal year, or year 2024, we're looking to promote some positivity and partly that is building a network. Even in ancient Japan, they had. They had merchants that they trusted on the Silk Road and different places throughout China and all these different places. If you are transporter, if you know a transporter that you would put your name on, that you was staff approved, you know what I'm saying, I just put the link in the chat, come through, let's talk about it. You know, I would like to just talk to somebody about my concerns with a transporter, because when it comes to getting dogs, I always will pick up my dogs or drop off my dogs myself. But sometimes that's just not, that's just not the best move, like right now, some brother in Maryland, who, I'm talking to about making a move. But the transporter is the issue, you know, so these are active, these are active, active situations where. I want to, I wanna start building that network, I'm gonna do a Samurai channel and go, okay, if it's a transporter here, they square business. And the reason why this kinda came up was, I was talking to Big A and I got a message on Instagram, I'm not gonna say the person's name that the message was about, because I don't go around spreading propaganda, I don't have yay or nay on this. But if you know what I'm talking about, just, you know what I'm saying, y'all can discuss how y'all wanna discuss it in the chat, shouts out Haiki Lee. A message was sent to me on Instagram and the brother said, there's a person that I had mentioned on YouTube before, this is scammer. They said they sent him money for a dog and they did not receive. The, they did not receive the compensation or the dog for the money they sent this person, right? Now I've received this, I've heard this on multiple accounts and there's even brothers making videos about being scammed by his brother, right? And the issue is, this brother's a street dude, he's a known street dude and he's a hustler, I don't knock people for hustling, I just don't, I try to deal with square business individuals. You know what I'm saying, I don't buy my Jordans from the corner guy, even if he has real Jordans, I gotta take the chance on him, I'm just gonna go get them from Nike, right? That's my own personal perspective, if you got better plugs and stuff, to take your chances with your plugs, but they're not reputable and you can't mass market them, they're not gonna scale. And we looking at this like a business, alright? So that being said, the same way that brother couldn't really be trusted to sell you the dog, he said he's gonna sell you, y'all gotta also be advised about these transporters. So if y'all got any input on these transporters, y'all go ahead and cook on that real quick.
Yeah, and, and that's also why I say, you know, it's better to deal with people you know. Of course, you, you've always got to give, you know, open the door to give, you know, that, that chance. But from dogs to not just the dogs, to transporting or anything, you, you will get further working with people that you actually know and can build with. You know, versus, you know, random, random goers, this, these are the, the type of situations you're trying to avoid. Situations like this, when they happen and they're bad, it just leaves a bad taste in your mouth and it might affect you for the next couple of years or your next purchase. These are things that we should avoid.
Yeah, hey Big Hill, Bakari, so I'm tracking the transporter he's talking about and. Yeah. Hey, Big Hill, uh Bakari, uh so I'm, I'm tracking the transporter he's talking about and uh uh on one of the game dog talks, even he was saying that his transporter is good, but the communication is not there. And so um that's one of the things I wanted to talk to y'all about, like, as the person who trains people, young people, how to communicate their ideas to complete a mission. With the Chauvin Army, we want to find transporters that we can push to have great communication skills, you know? They're gonna walk you through the process. What I don't like is when I'm paying for a service that costs money and the person's not willing to talk to me about what I'm buying. My job is to train people and also mechanic, right? Those are my two certified jobs. I'm expected to be walked through those jobs. But if I'm getting a passport from the passport office and the person doesn't want to help me figure out how to get this passport, uh or if I go into a shoe store and the person doesn't want to go in the back and help me get these shoes, that to me is not good customer service. Especially if I am a paying parishioner of your, of your company or business. Uh Brother BV say, uh, let's put up and start a Samurai transport service. Let's get it. Hey, so I'm gonna tell y'all right now, when I retire, there will be a transport, like my umbrella company will have. And this is why, this is why I can share it. Big A, I'm sorry, I gotta break the silence. The reason why I'm able to be successful is because I deal in the square area. I deal with the square stuff, you know? It won't be the most invigorating stuff, but it's, it's consistent. When I set out, I set out to be the Chick-fil-A of everything I get into. I'm not gonna be the worst burger you ever had, because Chick-fil-A don't have burgers, but I'm not gonna be the best chicken sandwich you ever had either, but you'll get the same consistency in that chicken sandwich every time. Every time. Alright, and so with that being said, my goal is to create a conglomerate where we can now hire people, but in order for you to be hired, you're gonna have to read a quote and spit certain knowledge from this, from our platform. Because I'm looking for, almost like when the Freemasons, if you get stopped in your Freemason and you, and there's certain signs that you can do, that Freemason can let another Freemason into Freemason, right? Now, with the Chauvin Army, we're going to basic training this year and next year. Next year is basic training, right? And what I'm trying to build is, there's certain things you would say to let people know you're in the know. And there's gonna be certain levels of knowledge that you can speak or spit to let people know you, you square business, you know? Because I'm tired of people getting shitted on and coming on YouTube and Instagram and Facebook or whatever social media sites they are, because they got shitted on by somebody who they thought was, was real, you know? I, I fall short quite often, but when it comes to these dogs, I'm gonna tell you what I know, alright? When it comes to other people, I'm only gonna speak on what I can speak on without fucking with somebody's livelihood. You know, if, if I'm not speaking poorly on them, but I'm not speaking positively on them, you go do the research for yourself. And uh if my brothers want to cook anymore on the transporter, uh y'all go ahead, but if not, I'm gonna move on to the next topic.
I'm gonna let you roll on, bro. You know, it's common sense, you know what I'm saying? And everything that I already been said, that really need to be seen about it, you know what I'm saying? They know the real from the fake, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and you know, they know who to deal, what they should know who to deal with, who not to deal with. You know, just like you were saying, uh that you deal in a square or as a square or whatever, you know what I'm saying? But uh all at the same time, at the end of the day, that square that you dealing in, bro, is called square business as well, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So that's what you known for, you know what I'm saying? So what's understood, don't need no explaining, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, bro.
Big facts.
So you, you, so just, so we simply got anything I want to add to it, or we good to push?
Hey, Cash Money had a song called Everybody Get Your Roll On.
Alright. Pimp, you good, go ahead.
Nah, I'm just gonna say, I'm talking square business to you, baby.
Square business.
Yeah.
Big Hill is talking about business. He said, I got y'all. On my end, I will handle the whole East Coast side. Was that main source wholesale and delivery is my little company, but that's whatever. So you already got a company. If expensive, your LLC, then you're protected or you're, or you're a pork. Like, this is the stuff that nobody wants to talk about, but everybody wants to talk about these dogs. And so um the next topic I'm gonna cover uh is, is a, is a topic that's gonna piss some people off, but it needs to be talked about. And it's the topic of the trade of dogs and goods. And uh so Big A and Pimps, Big A, you, you've heard of this person before, Pimps met this person before. Soul and Six Oh One, I'm gonna tell y'all the story while I'm releasing it to the public. Alright, uh so the two things I'm gonna cover tonight, historically speaking. One, I experienced, one I heard about. First, I'm gonna talk about what I heard about, alright? Now, uh we don't talk about Jaco, okay? So uh, you know, Bob Brass and Fletcher Sabres were responsible for uh creating that and putting that together, the litter to create a Jaco, Apple, and uh two other dogs that I, I don't know their names off the top of my head. I'd have to be looking at the pedigree to see the other dogs from that litter, right? But um Jaco ended up uh through some, through some dealings, whatever, getting traded to, this is all speculative. Y'all know the story better than I do. I don't mind y'all sharing it. You know, the link is in the chat, whatever. But Jaco ended up getting traded to a man who was uh in the LGBTQ plus community, right? And the guy, I was told that through the trade, the guy ended up at a, at a dog tour or something with Jaco. And they were clowning him by calling him a fairy and all this different stuff, and he ended up blowing somebody's face off. And uh that's why you didn't see too much more of Jaco, because Jaco was taking. What's, whoa. Stone, you a fool. Stone, you a fool.
Nigga, what? Did he, he did what to his face? What?
Yeah, but uh nah, but so that's the story of Jaco, man. And that was done through, through trades, man. Uh money wasn't tr- money wasn't uh given hand to hand on that story. But I say that because the Chavis family uh has a lot of family members up in uh Red Springs, North Carolina, which brings me to the second half of the story, which is what I was there for. And so um there's a guy up in the Red Springs, Lumberton, Pembroke area, that uh was a big mentor of mine uh by the name of uh Bennett Yarborough, Wade Yarborough. And so Yarborough uh this man is, when I think of a dog man, I, and I, I should have probably told this story a long time ago. When I think of a dog man, Yarborough is what I think about, because he was uh he was a poor white man uh that lived in a, a Lumbee community with his wife that was twenty years younger than him. And he raised three grandkids, countless nieces and nephews. Um, all the dope boys rock with him. Everybody, everybody fucking with him. And this man found a house, I don't know if you can still find these anymore, but like I said, where I grew up, it's just different. We're probably twenty years behind time. And so Yarborough had uh a house. He was renting from a landlord, but Yarborough had a yard, a yard. I would say probably had twenty dogs at any given time, that's included puppies. And uh if his livelihood was due, he would sell a dog. You know, um and then breathe, and then breathe and, and replace it. If he, if he needed a vehicle, he would take a one-time winner and trade it for a vehicle. You know, and so I hear people talk about pedaling and things, and he was a peddler. If you wanna, he was a peddler, but this man's dogs were so good that he was trading them for, at the time, it was early two thousand, he was trading for like nineteen ninety-five Mustangs and uh, you know, pickup trucks or, you know? During the bully boom, he, this is the kind of commerce that it could be, it always had to be money, man. You know, if you got, you got some, some blood that somebody else in the chat needs, I want this to be a place where we can come and converge and, and put it in the right places where you want your blood at. Or to, to get with a transporter you can trust, because you're gonna hear from them consistently. They're not, they're not gonna take your deposit and run from you. And the only way we're gonna do that is by building a community here. This is a nation building process. And it's a five-year process before the nation gets to where I want it to be at. Uh salute Pressure Combines kennel. Um, but yeah, but that being said, man, uh do y'all know anybody in the chat or anybody on the panel that have a story or anything like that, where they know somebody who literally lived? Like, this man paid his rent off of dogs, matching them, breeding them, training them, selling them, uh flipping. Does anybody else know anybody who completely made their living off of dogs? Not drugs to fund the dogs, but off the dogs themselves?
Well, I don't know nobody like that, man, but uh I took my hat out to him, you know what I'm saying? Niggas say what they wanna say. You know, um if this man putting in the work, bruh, and his dogs are that good to what people want them and and then he can live off of them and put good dogs out there to carry his name on and these dogs are keeping his mortgage paid and uh buying him trucks, what he can use to go make other money with. Man, if a nigga say that that man wrong in any kind of way, calling him a peddler or something like that, there's something wrong with that, cause that's what this shit fuck, you know what I'm saying? And that's the level that you want to try to get to, you know what I'm saying? To be able to get your shit out there to all these people who want it because it's good, because you put the time and the effort and the money into it. You know what I'm saying? First of all, so you putting out good shit, you know what I'm saying? There's nothing bad no one can say about you, you know what I'm saying? Come on, bro.
Hey, and then on top of that, bro, I've been in this man yard and some of them boys would come back from, they used to go to Thunder Valley. There's a place called Thunder Valley up, up there as a drag strip. But they would meet up up there and they would, they would leave from Thunder Valley and go to wherever they was going to, you know what I'm saying? This could not be confirmed or denied, man. It's just historically speaking purposes. But um they always came back to buy more dogs. They always came back. The man was whipping up dope in the backyard. Legal dope to an extent. You know, and these dogs you never would have heard of, because some of them were paperless. Some of them was paper on, but they didn't care. So when I talk to people about, you know, the, the, this stuff, man, like, you know, I don't agree with his, his tactics, but that was his life. You know, this man didn't, I, I watched him, he didn't have heat or, or, or air or electricity for the winter time. Then he took a dog, matched it, won. Took that dog, sold it, and was able to, to heat his house for the winter. He wasn't paying for two fifty on a little hood housing. For the house he was, he was living at, his, his livelihood was probably twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars a month. You know, selling that, flipping that dog like that was a lifestyle, man. You know, he was good at it. And there was times where he got down bad and he would call me and say, hey, man, you know, there's this dog that I, I wanted, you know, fifteen hundred for it, but um if you find somebody with twenty-five, or with twenty, uh two hundred fifty dollars right now, they got it. Fire them. Fire them. You know, um so I, I just see the game a little different, man, and uh it was all word of mouth. You would never have known this guy unless it was word of mouth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
So what would happen if it wasn't any currency? And you know, uh you're in a position where you gotta live off of the land, you know? Those dollars, trading dollars, you know, as far as uh uh currency and stuff like that can say, say, yo, you know, your fam, they help you put food on the table tonight. Can do a whole bunch of stuff, you know?
Brother Big A, I got a word for you. Word of the day. It's called barterism.
Yeah.
Gotta learn how to barter. What?
Yeah.
Stone Cold Ted So.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Hey, man, I want to give a shout out to PBK and Brother Eli Monster. Welcome to the chat, fellas.
Salute, 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 salute.
Hey, hey, I'm gonna go ahead and employ everybody. Hey, y'all better get your skills together. The Bricks Nations is looking real heavy in the building. Currency about to look real shaky around this bit. Get nice with your hands and some skills on some real.
Oh, yeah, and if you can't clean and grow a fish and small game, uh, you know what I'm saying? It's cer- it's certain skills that a man's supposed to have. Also, let me shout out Dicky Foster, man. Shouts out Brother Dicky, another illustrious member in the field.
Let me go ahead and give that brother wellness salute, Brother Dicky Foster. Hey, and I tell you what, you come knocking on my goddamn front door looking for something to eat. Shots fired, goddamn. Get off my lawn, you goddamn bastards.
Hell, yeah. Alright, y'all, uh next topic. Next topic, let me see if I can get this thing just for now. The last thing I wanted to cover was the Neo Dog Man Community. Alright, so it's, it's, it goes without saying that I have the utmost respect for traditional dog meat. But we will not survive if we don't incorporate the holistic approach of Dog Man. I want to share a story with y'all. Big A, you've heard this story already. I want to tell you what happened at work yesterday. And this is what y'all don't realize. This is why I said we the best people. If you don't get shit up from this live tonight, get this and take this to the bank. Yesterday at work, my coworker brought in his Golden Retriever, a twenty-five hundred dollar dog. And she's laying in his office and he says, uh, he says, um, my dog's in heat. I said, really? He said, yeah. She was bleeding his blood on the floor, viscous blood. My, I guess, said she was between five and seven days in. He said, she started bleeding seven days ago. He said, I'm taking her to the vet today to get her progesterone tested. I said, if she's seven days in, she'll be ready on Saturday, okay? He goes to the vet, the vet runs three hundred dollars worth of tests and tells him the exact same thing I just told him. And I didn't realize until this point, he paid, he paid thirteen hundred dollars. This man paid thirteen hundred dollars for the stud fee plus, plus the progesterone testing. But these other breeds and breeders are not nearly as efficient as we were. And it, it took me back. I was taken back that somebody would pay thirteen hundred dollars and not know this about breeding at all. Alright, and so I explained it to him. I said, look, man, I said, I, like, I deal with bulldogs, but, you know, I said, how do the people, people treat you? And he said, his, his response was, they don't treat me any kind of way, because I'm breeding my Golden Retriever to a, to a pool. I'm making golden doodles. I sell them for two thousand dollars a piece. Last litter I had was eleven dogs. I said, you don't keep anything? He said, no, I sold the whole litter. They don't give a shit. Nobody takes care of their dogs like pit bull owners and we are under attack. We are under attack. This man, everything they say about people who let good puppies go from our community, this man don't give a fuck about hip dysplasia, none of that shit. Best believe I asked these questions, because it, it is a prevalent thing in the Golden Retriever community for Golden Retrievers that have hip dysplasia, specifically American bred Golden Retrievers. Now, at least, the good thing is, he actually has a traditional European bred Golden Retriever. Alright? So he asked me, he said, he said, uh, you're pit bulls, well, babe? I said, my dog's trained as shit. And I showed him, I showed him some videos that y'all, y'all already know. He's, I didn't know pit bulls could do that. I said, you got one that was considered one of the smartest dogs, top three, and your dog don't even heal on the left-hand side. There's a lot of things you don't know. And that's why I implore y'all, I'm not telling you to go out and make friends with everybody. We not fucking friendly. I don't buy my dogs for other people to be able to touch them. Y'all know that already. What I'm telling you is, man, that proud, that proud of going against this legislation shit is, is essential. Because everybody who buys one of them golden doodle puppies is a dog owner. They may not be a bulldogger, but they are a fucking dog owner. And I promise you, they pay two thousand dollars for a golden doodle, yo knowledgeable pit bull loving ass is the best friend they'll ever have. Because I know when I met my mentor, he wasn't the nicest person, but everything I know about, everything about breeding dogs that I got from my mentors. And I never once paid for no damn progesterone testing. Eli Monster, that's a fact. It's vets right now that don't know how to put an IV in it all. They did it in school, but they don't do it consistently, because maybe, maybe they don't have those issues. That's why they have animal hospitals and vet clinics.
No, you a hundred percent right, bro. Um, most brothers who I know who raise APBTs, only time they really go into the vet is for vaccinations. Otherwise, for the most part, they handling all of that care on their own, unless it's something like major, you know what I mean? But you talk to the average, uh, uh, dog owner, man, these people are so removed from uh, any type of knowledge with their hounds. And uh, now you speaking truth to power, man. That you, you get to talking to these people and you find out the, uh, y'all forgive me, I got baby soul right here. He, he crawling all over me like a jungle gym. Yeah, nah, these people are so ignorant to dog care and any type of dog knowledge. That's why, like you said, you, you, uh, the brother told you how long the dog had been in heat and you could guarantee, or you had a, a high probability of when she would be ready to breed. But these people so removed from reality. Like, uh, most people don't even know if they have a purebred dog, they can't even tell you what bloodline and ancestry that dog came from. And I'mma leave it at that.
Uh, Big Eight, six oh one, uh, any of y'all wanna cook on that?
Uh, nah, I'm just taking it in, bro. I just sitting back listening.
Okay, cuz I'm, I'm, this, this, this situation like that, I'm spilling on it, it's a lot more on my chest than I thought it had on my chest about it. Okay, so I didn't have this conversation with this coworker, but we'll probably have it tomorrow. He, he works for me, right? And um, one of the things I didn't think to ask him was, would you take your wife to the doctor every time she got a cold? The first time you get a scratchy throat, you probably taking some therapy, then you get a headache, you take aspirin, right? You run into the vet every time your dog is upset. But they family, but your dog is family.
Yeah, no, what I was saying, I think a lot of people don't apply the same knowledge that they would use for humans to their animals. May- maybe I'm wrong, but that, that's my perception. Just basic common things that I would do for my child. I, I translate that over to my animals.
Well, that's the thing, these people are treating animals better than their kids. Like, if my son fall right now and bust his ass and he just scratches his knee up, I'm not taking him to a doctor. I'mma clean this shit up and put a Band-Aid on it. That's the thing with a topical. Yeah, that's the same thing with a topical application for an animal. You know, you find, so for me personally, I use a lot of hydrogen peroxide for if there's a sore on my hand. I clean it, I dress it, and I keep the animal in an area where then I'm gonna rub off the dressing. Personal preference, alright? I also use hydrogen peroxide, peroxide to and that's the, uh, was it, uh, it's an, it's an aseptic to clean out any small abrasions I have. Alright? It's, it's not rocket science, people. Hold on, I'm gonna agree with Party Boy said. Party Boy said, people don't realize pits are way harder to care of than other dogs. Yes, they can take pain, guts and all, but they also get out of anything, jump over fences easy and want to kill any other animal. Hell yeah.
They are the number one escape artists of all breeds to me.
Yes. I, I, I want to do a video showing y'all Saki jumped my six foot privacy fence in the backyard, but I don't wanna encourage him to jump the fence because I've seen him do it twice already, and both times it was, I, I beckoned him to do it. It was never to go over somebody else, right? But the fact that he does it now, now I have to put him on, I have to put him on a tie out when I let him out to Eli's bathroom, cuz I don't wanna stand there and watch.
I wish they could see Dior, cuz no matter where you put Dior, you put her in a new spot or anything, the first thing she doing is looking for a way out.
Yeah.
The very first thing she doing.
Tony M say, people just lazy, and if they have bred, they go into the vet. Like a good dog parent. Well, you think that's the good dog parent, but then they would be having insurance. Fuck my family, fuck my family, take care of my, my family, I'mma go pay the vet three thousand dollars. Bet you have medical insurance on your kids, be taken to the doctor.
Hey, hey Dre, these are the same people, uh, when we was in bondage. Look how they treated livestock versus us, and I'm, I'm not gonna go heavy into that. But they're, the dichotomy that they have for animals versus humans is, is really sickening. So I'll shut up with that, Peter.
Hey, Eli Monster, it may not be spelled correctly, but I know exactly what you're talking about. It is, it is. I also use, I, I also use a raw eye down from track supply as well, depending on how big or the, the lesion or abrasion is. And uh, I like that because it's a brown color, so when I put on a cut and I rub it in, you can see the area that's been treated. It's, it's a visual indicator the area's been treated, that I'll wash it out, you know? Hey, hold on, Supreme said, I got a coworker, I know I can sell a puppy for two K. Does that mean, make me a peddler? They got fucking tarantulas, I know they love their pets. Hey, first of all, tarantulas, they know, if the pet can't alright, let me take this back. In my opinion, let me, let me disclaimer, in my opinion, if you can't walk it and you wouldn't let it like lick your hand, that's not a pet. That is a, that is a pest. Kill it. Okay, uh, I don't do spiders, bro. I don't do spiders. Snakes don't bother me, I don't do, I don't do spiders at all, man. But I feel, and I don't think that makes you a peddler, man. I think it makes you a peddler, man. Go ahead, bro.
Nah, I was gonna say, well, you got, you gonna have to stop that conversation, cuz these people will eat a whole chicken dinner, a chicken tender dinner with a goddamn tarantula on their face. What? What? A whole chicken tender dinner with a tarantula on their face talking about.
Jasper, he's a great pet. He just loves me so much.
Yo, Rob, what's good, big guy? We just, uh, we just chopping up man and decompressing for the week. What's up?
Man, listen, uh, I, I just wanted to say something to what brother Supreme said. If he got something that somebody wanna give him two thousand dollars for, and if he got it to give or got it to sell or feeling in his heart that that's what he wanna do, then now that don't make you no peddler, man. Come on, man, make you a smart man, you know what I'm saying? Come on, bro. If you got it to give or got it to sell, you know, and they gonna give you what it's worth for, then that's what you do, bro. You know what I'm saying? And just keep him one thousand with him, you know what I'm saying? That's all I'm on, bro.
Amen to that, bro. Amen.
Hey, man, these people will have a python named Travis and let it lay in the crib with their newborn baby. I'm telling you.
Hey, so Big Hill said some real shit, and I'mma tell y'all another story, cuz Dre got stories for the days. Big Hill said, you can go to a local community college or a local school for veterinarians and befriend a person studying that trade and they become your personal vet. I'mma tell you something else. Bill Gates said the same shit. When Bill Gates went to Microsoft, he was going to school. Bill Gates would go sit into the lectures for his junior and senior year classes and get the information. He cared nothing about the certification or the degree. He took that information, went created Microsoft, and then went back and bought his degree. Did they make Harvard a peddler? Cuz they definitely sold it to him. You know what I'm saying? Like, what, what are you gonna tell a person who took yours? What your teacher gave them and made it better?
Scheme, scheme, plot, plot. Coming for that number one spot.
Yeah, man.
Look, you only a peddler if the government don't get their cut. They don't get their cut, then you a peddler.
Hey, I gotta go back real quick, y'all, cuz I seen a brother here posted some reels, he said, uh, okay, that, this is Big Hill farm, Big Hill farm be spitting game, and I thought I'd put a link in the chat, man. I don't know if you know how to use it, man, but get what your daughter, man, so you can get in here, cuz like, you need to be heard. He said, on the real, warriors need to have a war chest. And that chest should consist of lawyers, vet, emergency funds for fallen soldiers' families. Or, what matter, absolutely. And we're not gonna operate in a, in an illegal capacity, but we need to be, we need to mob up in the, in regards of positive things. You know, um, I don't have it yet, but Triple J's working on that. Triple J's working on the lawyer side of it. We got, we gotta support the brother, like, I haven't seen, I don't agree with everything Triple J say, but I agree with what he's doing as far as that, getting the protection and the lawyer stuff. Vets, this is what we gotta start doing, y'all. I like the vets that take care of other people. You know what I'm saying? We don't have to tear down the, the, the bad vets, there's plenty of them to tear, they, they, they're, they're bad practices, we'll tear them down. But if you got a vet you fuck with, like, rest in peace Dr. Midget from E-Town, North Carolina. If you got a vet like that, shout that mug out to the chat. If he's in your state, I, if I had a vet in Arizona that was like Dr. Midget, I would drive four hours to see, to see that vet. No more often than I go to the vet. It's worth it. Alright, the emergency center for fallen, the emergency fund for fallen soldiers, uh, I, I'll strata with y'all as well. Next year, we're gonna be developing a ranking system. And in that ranking system, we're gonna have regions, so those are members, anybody who wants to get really involved in the Shogun Army, doesn't wanna be just in the chat. Uh, we're gonna have regional, like, just like how you have ADVA clubs and stuff, we're gonna have regional people that you can reach out to. This was something that was observed even in the civil rights movement where, I'm not saying you gotta open up your house to anybody, I don't, I don't do that, I'm not gonna put you in a, in harm's way, I don't know everybody here. But, uh, regional members and regional memberships is what we're gonna be looking for. If you're in Carolina, you know, and you trust to communicate via WhatsApp or something like that to get to know somebody, and this is, let me, let me clarify this, this is not for box men to hide and clandestine actions. Uh, if you do that, I don't, I'm not against you, brother, but this is for the, this is for a, the army. This is for a strong army. And my, my vision is that, uh, you can reach out to somebody in, in Carolina and go, hey, man, like, look, um, I know you're part of the Shogun Army, I'm also part of the Shogun Army. Uh, there's a transporter, it's gonna cost me two thousand dollars to get this dog to Florida, but he'll drive it from Virginia to Georgia for five hundred. Would you hold his dog until I can make that trip to come get it from you as opposed to that transporter? But it, it's gonna take a lot of trust, it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of communication, and most of all, it's gonna take a lot of real Samurai Shogun Army warriors to build this network. I wanna network that if I come to your city and I'm sending a motel, you go, hey, this motel right here, they allow pit bulls in their motel. You know, this is the kinda network we wanna build. If I'm going to an ADVA show and I'm in your city and your neck of the woods, okay, Dre, um, this city right here, you don't wanna go there. They got, they got a, 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 a pit bull ban, like Miami used to have, in Denver, you know what I'm saying? Uh, that's what I'm looking for, is a network of people who know their area and are, are real, are real husbanders of, of, of the breed.
So, I'm, uh, I'm part of Inc. Inc. is like, uh, Impalas and Caprices for sure. And we have chap, we have chapters in damn near every city. You know, I, I'm, I'm part of STL Inc., St. Louis Inc., but I'm out here in San Antonio. And, uh, San Antonio, S A Inc., we got Houston Inc., DFW Inc., uh, you know what I'm saying? Illinois, SoCal, North Cal, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, we have all over, and, uh, it's the same, it's the same concept, the same deal. And we're not like no car club or anything like that, it's more of a family thing. This is something you bring your family out to. And, um, what happens within this is we have, uh, um, like, you get all types of little perks for being in there, you know what I'm saying? Being part of it, like, uh, building your car. Um, when you're building your car, you kinda going through a lot of blind stuff because you don't know this, you don't know that. Well, it's somebody within Inc. that's done everything that you need to do or can tell you, hey, don't do that. Well, we go, if, if we had, you know, we had like Midwest Mayhem in Chicago, and that's one of the biggest ones where all them Impalas come out, you know, across the nation. And, uh, when we go there, everybody, you know, it's like, hey, uh, this is the hotel that you wanna stay at, this is where you don't wanna be, you know, and so on and so forth. And it's all love, you know what I'm saying? Uh, uh, you get broken down on the side of the road, there's somebody riding, they see your ink, uh, patch on your car or something like that, man, they pulling over helping you. Hey, man, what you need, you know what I'm saying? I get you a tow, I got a tow at the house. And it's the same concept, but with the dogs. You know what I'm saying? Exact same concept.
Hey, and so that being said, man, the, the, the opposite side of that, what I'm trying to avoid is, is so I'm a Carolina street rider. That's the car club that I, that, that I pledged with when I was in Carolina. And you don't, you don't leave street riders, you know what I'm saying? And so with street riders, uh, we ended up doing some hood shit and the policing area got on our asses, so basically what happened was, street riders was the opposite of that. It became an infamous logo to have on your vehicle. You know what I'm saying? And I had my street rider logo on the back windshield, and I was getting pulled over for no fucking reason. You know what I'm saying? Because, uh, and that's what we're trying to avoid with the Shogun Army, man, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's it's almost like when you, there's certain organizations where you're like, okay, there's outliers, there's exceptions to the rule, but the typical rule for somebody in this organization is their personal standards, you know, and that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking for those y'all. If you really wanna rock with us and you really wanna be part of the Shogun Army, do that. Because it's, it's a volunteer thing. The greatest military in the world, to me, in my opinion, is the US military. And the reason for that is, the US military is predominantly comprised of volunteer fighters. This means the people are there because they wanna be there, not because they're conscripted, for the most part.
And, and that's what, and that makes a big difference when it comes to other countries that have conscripted, because I got brain, yeah, I mean, I'm tongue twisted, but, uh, you know what I'm saying? Uh, they, they have, uh, uh, you know, uh, soldiers or whatnot that, uh, you know, like, for example, in Germany, no matter what, you gotta, you gotta serve for two years, you know what I'm saying? Same thing with Mexico, same thing with Mexico. And when, you know, when, when it hits the fan, you know, these people like Russia right now, you know what I'm saying? You got people walking out the field with their hands up, like, I'm done, I quit, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I also say that, uh, I know a lot of y'all brothers like live different lives, man, but, um, if you're unable to, like, operate a firearm, I be telling y'all, man, like, election seasons come around, man. I told y'all this back in twenty twenty-one. Like, if my brothers say, you know, we, and we come together, those of us who can vote, you know, uh, get out and ask them questions, like, okay, how do you feel about American pit bull territory? Before we put these motherfuckers in office, people ask these dumbass questions, like, can a man use a woman's bathroom? I don't give a shit what bathroom they use, as long as they're using my kids. You know what I'm saying? What I do give a fuck about is we try to take my guns, weed or my dogs. And I don't smoke weed yet. When I retire in six years, yes, I done did my twenty years, and i- if you try to take my guns, my weed and my dogs, we got a problem. You know what I'm saying? And that's the truth. You know, uh, everything else, do you, boo boo. Do you? You know, and that's the kinda politicians and that kinda question I need y'all asking and looking for in y'all local areas, man. If y'all think some fugation is going on in your area, let it be known so we can put the word out and we can get the people who can speak on your behalf in your area out. Somebody knows somebody from where you at. But I, this is the, this is the nation building process, y'all. This is the nation building process. Dogman TV, uh, yeah, man, I, um, I appreciate all y'all brothers, bro. Uh, I'm not gonna keep this thing too long. Are we gonna do our humble plugs? Y'all, we gonna be in the back chat. I'm gonna go ahead and put, uh, the link in, in the description, uh, one more, uh, link in the chat one more time, y'all, for anybody who wants to jump in the back chat for a little bit. But, uh, this is, I've said what I need to say for the week. You know, this, this is our, this is our weekly thing. Uh, I've enjoyed y'all, uh, we cooked with my, my brothers, y'all go ahead and, um, y'all go ahead and say what y'all need to say so we can go, so we can get up out of here.
Alrighty, alrighty, it's your boy So Power, AKA Gamed Up Candles. I'm live earlier today. Y'all go tap in with that salute to the almighty Shogun Army. You know what I'm saying? Love y'all brothers. Y'all make sure y'all tap in. We out. Salute.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, man, much love, man. Uh, love y'all, man. Shout out to the fam, shout out to the chat, shout out to the panel, shout out to all the other channels out there making it happen, you know, for real.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Uh, six, six oh one, Pips Over Simpsons, y'all got anything y'all wanna plug? Six oh one, you got any litters coming up anytime soon?
Nah, I ain't got, nah, well, I, well, I goddamn it, uh, I'm gonna talk to you.
Yeah. Amen.
Salute to everybody who came through, man. It's good, you know what I'm saying? Be back in the congregation, bro, you know what I'm saying? Till next time, man. They keep God first, bro.
Hell yeah. Yes, sir. Everybody be chilling, man. That was my bad, bro. You know, I mean, no, it's you, bro. I'm, I'mma close it out. That's, I'mma shut up.
Everybody be safe, man. Salute, salute.
Supreme, do you want to highlight the crowd before we get into the back chat?
Nah, nah, we good.
All good. All good. Y'all, I appreciate y'all. Good cook up. Big Hill Farms, I would like to see you in the back chat one of these days, man. Dogman TV, I'd like to hear, I'd like to see you on the panel and in the back chat. Y'all brothers already know, I'mma close it out with the intro. Salutes y'all. And if y'all need to reach me, I'll put, I'mma start putting the link to the WhatsApp, to my personal WhatsApp in the chat. I holler.